Alrighty. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our work session. I hope everyone has had a fantastic summer. It's hard to believe that it is over and that we're already back in school. Love seeing all the photos and being in the buildings for open houses, lots of smiles. I think as much as we love summer, we're ready to be back in the school building and do what we do best, so excited about that. Excited for Thursday to welcome the kids back in. I know all of you guys are as well. So we will go ahead and get started. Next week at our board meeting, Ms. Stevens will lead us an invocation and pledge. And we have shifted our agenda slightly, and so we're going to do a new format. And so we're going to start off with support services with Dr. J.B. Bowen to present a few items.
Thank you. It's my pleasure tonight to share with you some information from our school safety and security plan. Obviously, school safety is our number one priority. We have a fundamental assurance to staff and students and their respective families that we're going to keep people safe when they're at school, at school events, on our school grounds. So we do this through a multi-agency, multi-departmental approach, meaning we partner with different agencies in the, both on a local level but also on the state, federal level. We also do a multi-departmental approach within the school system. Safety touches every single department that we have. Obviously, there's a commitment from business services through budgeting and how we prioritize. There's also, it's an attractive tool for recruitment to know that we have a safe environment for people to work in, which touches personnel. Our maintenance and our facilities and our operations are closely tied in with all of our safety and security features we have in our buildings and campuses. And obviously, all this leads to having a more optimal teaching and learning environment by keeping our students and staff safe. We obviously have strong support from our Board of Education as vital by the commitment of resources and supporting us as we do move into new areas, which we'll talk about in a minute of new innovations that we have in safety. Our community partners are essential. Not just the Sheriff's Department and also the city police departments, but not just them. There's a lot of other agencies we partner with who we'll talk about moving forward tonight. We do believe we take a team approach to maintaining a safe school environment, and we make it a priority on school levels, as you'll hear about shortly in the form of drills and priority even in school improvement plans for keeping our schools safe. Our greatest, our single greatest safety asset, I believe, is our chief, John Skinner. John is our chief safety and security officer, and we're just going to go through a list of things that John does because he's not great at talking about how good he is. He's pretty humble, but he partners with our sheriff. He also partners with all our school resource officers, all our city police departments. He has a very close relationship with them, a lot of communication. He's very aware of things that are constantly happening in our community, not just in our schools, but in our communities that affect our students and families. He partners with EMS, GEMA. He's very well-connected. He doesn't just carry a gun. He's also very well-connected with people in our community. He's got a history of working and serving in this community, and he's a native of this community as well. So those are all pluses for us. John is in charge of conducting background checks and fingerprinting on all employees that come through our system. He works directly with school safety teams and administrations on each level with schools to monitor everything from drills we're doing to also the safety audits, the clean and safe school walks, fire inspections, working with a fire marshal on that. And as John has recently told me, he's been on call his entire life. He's always on call. So we're very fortunate to have John in our system. He's going to talk to you in a few minutes about some of the specific things that he does in just a second. I want to share two things with you next, though, which are two technology tools that we use in our pursuit of becoming more and more safe in our school environment. One is our vector training and workforce management solutions. These are, vector training is an award-winning K-12 online training. It's where we do a lot of our training modules. We can assign those out. They get an email notification. They log on to their platform. They complete those modules. We do everything from safety to counseling-related to health-related models, but vector is a primary tool that we use to deliver safety training. It has a variety of things. It has scenario learning modules, has a suite of safety and compliance programs, instruction intervention, has bus safety modules, cyber safety modules, and also sexual abuse prevention modules. All are contained within that one platform. It's called Vector. The second tool is a newer tool that we have. It hasn't been without some hiccups so far, but it's called Synthegix. And Synthegix is a crisis alert system. You may remember when we came to you and shared this with you. In fact, Brent Coleman came and did a presentation to you about Synthegix. You've seen that before, but basically it is a wearable, mobile panic button. It's a button that every staff member will carry. They have carried a badge that has this button. They all have carried it some in April and May. We did some practicing and drills with it. The big issue that we've run in with Synthegix so far is we are on our third set of badges. The first set that we got halfway through this past year turned out to be from a defective batch of badges. So they sent us a new set about April, and which I think we got them right in the middle of testing season, so we're a little bit slower getting those out, but we did get them out to schools in May. And then come to find out, they upgraded to a new and improved model of badges and asked us to send the second set back, and they sent us a third set, which we have now and we're currently divvying up to try to get out to our schools as fast as possible. But I will say that trying to do that in the second half of July is not a great time for our IT department as we're opening a new building, and we have buildings that have gone up and down and been renovated. And so it's a stressful time in IT. You don't want to go over there unless you have business. You don't really want to hang around there. But we are getting the badges out this week. But just to review a little bit about what they do is any staff member that carries one of these badges can mash a button, and if they mash it three times, then they get, it alerts the response team in their building that they need assistance from someone in the building. If they mash it seven, eight, or more times, there's not a limit, then it does a school lockdown and a notification through 911 dispatch, which obviously ignites an emergency response. So those are the two primary things that the badges are going to do. And we've already been practicing that and introducing that with them, and we're sorry, principals, that we are having a difficult time getting the badge to you that you're allowed to keep, but we hope we can fix that. We're told the new and improved badge is able to be updated remotely, which is a good thing. It also has a longer battery life, so hopefully the ones you get this time, you'll keep for a very long time and never have to use. Now, one more thing. I wanted to share with you too, just a couple of images there. We have an app, a Synthegix app, that can be downloaded on phones so that if a principal does get an alert in their building, they can actually pull a map up on their phone or on their computer that will tell them exactly where the alert is coming from and can be tracked in the building. Now, if that's, if someone's needing medical assistance, obviously, we want to know where they are to go to them, but if it happens to be a lockdown drill, then it also gives you the area of where your intruder may be, so law enforcement will find that useful as well. It also has a takeover of all computers in the building as well, and that's what a screen would look like if we went into lockdown, is it would show, every screen in the building would show that same safety message. Okay? So now I want to ask John to come up and talk about some specific things that he's in charge of and give you more details. Thank you.
Just to go back on the Synthegix real quick, the Sheriff's Department, the PD agencies in the county, also their shift supervisors have that, will have the app. And so they're going to get that notification right away as well, and so that'll help them respond a whole lot quicker. Dispatch 911 Center will also have that as well, so they'll be signaling that out to everybody. But the shift supervisors for the Sheriff's Department and all the PDs will also have that, too. And I'll also go back to background checks real quick. I have to give Kelly Anderson, I know she's not here, but I put a lot on Kelly Anderson. She does a lot of the background stuff for me because I'm not always in the building, and so she is always there, and I want to give her a little props for that real quick, too. Alright, so moving on for preparedness, obviously drills and training and drills and exercises is a big part of our preparedness. We do eight fire drills a year, four intruder lockdown drills, and two severe weather drills. This year, we're changing it up. September is going to be our intruder drill, where we will not do a fire drill that month, but we will activate our Synthegix system and actually train on the system. Moving on to the active shooter full-scale exercise we conducted in March of this past year, or 2024, last school year, I guess. This was done, this took about two years to plan. We had a big tabletop exercise here in this building with all the agencies in the county. Homeland Security ran that for us, and then it evolved into a full-scale exercise where we done an active threat at Russell Middle School. We had our staff participate in that. I think there was approximately 100 of the staff that was involved in that. Several of our schools were able to watch all this from their locations as well, and eventually we will get a training video that we'll be able to put out to all of our staff. Our digital marketing team is working on that now. Just to give you a little bit on the drill itself, the shooter was taken out by one of our SROs who's assigned to that school in less than about 10 minutes from the time that it all went out and was dispatched by himself. He'd done really good, Officer Blake Denna. He'd done really well in the drill, so to give him a little bit of props there, too. We've had a lot of lessons learned, so when we talk about Synthegix, the admin did not hear the gunshots, and we actually had gunshots inside the school. Admin and several of the teachers did not hear the gunshots from their area where they were at. So that's where Synthegix is going to come into play. Anybody can put that school on lockdown. Moving on, we do behavioral threat assessment training for all our admin, and our SROs just took that. We have another class coming up in January. Stop the Bleed, and I want to kind of highlight this one for a second because I do not know of another district that has pretty much everybody in their district certified in Stop the Bleed. So I know Lance is a big part of that. Bear County Emergency Services has been a big part of that, supported for us, but we just done all of our transportation staff again, and most everybody comes in, the new hire orientation, they get that as well. Craze is another training that we do, our SROs provide to our staff, all the teachers each year. We try to do this on an annual basis, and they're working through that now. And we all have SROs. We have 16 positions. We've got 15 SROs right now. We're trying to get another one, so if anybody knows, anybody looking for a job, I'll take that. Like I said, they're handling Craze, and they're helping me with the safety audits, et cetera, throughout the schools. Go into the school emergency operation plan and the emergency preparedness plans or procedures. The school emergency operation plan is really an in-depth plan. Talks about our preparedness, mitigation, response, and recovery. The emergency procedures, which is what you'll see if you're in the classrooms, you'll see the little guidebooks. A lot of times, we also have an app for that. They're basically actions to take during an incident for a fire, medical, et cetera. They're a little more detailed. The plan itself doesn't go to all the staff. The plan is for the admin, and then the emergency procedures are for all staff. And we're going to, like I said, we have the MyEOP app, which we done about a couple of years ago, has the classroom guide on it. We just implemented the admin guide to our administration, and then we're also looking to update that this year. We started last year working on that part, and we'll have probably a big update to hopefully push out this year at some point in time if funding allows. Any questions?
We appreciate you guys. Very important.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Thank you, Dr. Bowen and Mr. Skinner. Next, we'll have Ms. Houston from Business Services.
Good evening. The informational item we have is the monthly fundraiser report. It shows you the scheduled fundraisers for each school. Then each month, it is updated for the net amount of revenue that is earned in that fundraiser. We have a couple of recommendations. The first one is the recommendation by the superintendent to declare four buses as surplus. The four buses below are 31 years old, and due to age, parts not being accessible, need to be declared as surplus. Once they're surplus, two buses will be donated to the Barrow County Sheriff and Emergency Services for bus safety training, and the two remaining will be placed on an auction site for sale to the highest bidder. If they do not sell, we will then be sold for scrap metal, and the funds will be placed in the general fund.
Any questions? Consent? Alright, thank you, ma'am.
Alright, and Ms. Trunk will give us our second recommendation.
Good evening. I come to you for our large equipment bid for school nutrition, and the superintendent recommends acceptance of our bid for large equipment to Owens Equipment and Company. They had the lowest bid. We have several dishwashers, ovens, and some holding cabinets that we need to purchase for the schools. Is there any questions?
This is coming out of the federal budget for food and nutrition.
Yes, it's already been budgeted in the schools.
Consent?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Houston and Ms. Trunk. Next, we have Mr. Purno with System Operations.
Good evening. We've got five information items tonight, two action items. We'll start with our information items, and this is an update on our county line, Winder Elementary and Bethlehem Elementary renovations, and these are recently completed, and you see some photos there. This was HVAC retrofit, painting, lights, new gym floor, a lot of work on our playgrounds. There are 56 days, including weekends and holidays in the summer for our workforce, our contractors, and Dr. Leduff and I took an impromptu visit on July 9 to Bethlehem and County Line. When we did that, as Dr. Leduff said, when we got back, you know, it was, that was a quiet ride back to the office. It's a little humbling. You walk into these facilities, there's 13 days left until teachers return, and there is ceiling grid hanging from the ceiling, there are lights hanging, there's stuff all over the floor, and even seeing this year after year, it's hard to get your mind wrapped around that, that it's going to come together. So we got back here, it just so happened that our project manager with Charles Black Construction was here as well. He met us in the lobby, and we said, you know, you got this, Jacob? We good? He said, yes, sir. Confident we have this. He said, we have 25% of our summer left. And again, that doesn't really sink in either, but 13 days out of 56 represents 23%. They still had 23% of their summer left. So to them, they had a lot of time, and they did. They accomplished a great deal of work in just a single day. So with 13 left, they got it buttoned up. Dr. Leduff and I happened to be standing in the lobby of County Line Elementary School this morning for open house, and we looked down that hallway, and it looked a lot different. So just kudos to the construction team, the subcontractors, Kendall, Dutton, our project manager, everyone that really just gets after it hard and fast for not quite two months. They did a terrific job. Our Performing Arts Center is moving along very well. We'll roll the Bethlehem and County Line projects off of our reports moving forward, and this one will kind of move up. But again, they're making great progress there, and, you know, it's just a different dynamic when you have 14 or 15 months versus 56 days. So they're doing very well, and we're excited about that, to see it progressing the way Okay, so just on the heels of Bethlehem and County Line, and an update there that we gave, we have another item of information here. This is for Hayman Morris, Winder Bear High School, and Bear Creek Middle School. So this is our next round of work that we're planning. We came to you in January of 2023. You approved an architect for us, Smallwood Reynolds Stewart &amp; Stewart, and since that time, we've been working on the design plans for these projects. And so for Hayman Morris, it's a full renovation with HVAC, again, paint, floors, and lights, those sorts of things. Gym at Winder Bear High School is going to primarily be the two-story addition at the back of the campus that gets a renovation, and these facilities have reached their birthday, we call it. So they've been there for 20 years. We're eligible to receive state funds to help renovate them, and so this is the next step in that process, is just making you aware of the application. We'll make to the state for this. Once they review it and approve it, we'll come back to you for approval of the application itself. We would like to do work at Bear Creek Middle School while we have a contractor in this area, and the work there would be getting their gym floor changed from rubber to wood, and if the budget will allow, to retrofit the lights as well. So even though we wouldn't receive state money for that project, we would like to get that done and get Bear Creek at the same levels or other schools in those areas. Okay. Alright, our fifth item of information is BASSA athletic facilities. I'll read a little bit here on this one. "In the coming months, construction of tennis courts and a multipurpose field will continue at the Innovation Campus. The area where the courts will be placed adjacent to the BASSA III or Performing Arts Center," they're one and the same. "Parking area has already been graded and has a gravel subbase installed. The field next to the parent loop around the back of BASSA has sod and irrigation already in place. As construction on BASSA II ends and work on the Performing Arts Center continues, the courts will be finished out with paving, surface markings, fence, lights, sidewalks. The field will receive lighting, a concession restroom press box building, concrete pad and bleachers. These items have been discussed with the Building Committee and Board of Education during the master planning and design of the Innovation Campus. Latest communication we had on this was at our Building Committee meeting on January 30 and the subsequent BOE work session. The rationale for this is that the location of these facilities on the Innovation Campus and the timing of their installation, in conjunction with the construction of BASSA II and BASSA III, allows for the most efficient and economical completion of these components. These facilities are funded through SPOST and already approved, guaranteeing maximum price exhibits for BASSA II and BASSA III." So we're excited to get these coming up out of the ground. We've kind of had to work ourselves out of that campus. We're kind of in the corner now, and we'll be able to come out of there, but, you know, we needed lay-down area for supplies and materials through the development of the entire campus, and so now we're able to bite off these pieces here and provide these facilities to BASSA. The field is a future middle school field, so we have a future middle school pad in the back corner back there. We can develop this field now, so the BASSA can use it, and then when a middle school comes online in the future, they'll have access to that field as well. So those are our five action, or information items. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
I just want to say thank you. I mean, sir? We know you guys work hard year-round, but I know those 56 days are, you know, that's your shining, time to shine, and you and Kendall and the team, and Jacob and his team, making all the new stuff look pretty while Greg and his team keeps all of our other stuff up and running and still working, so we appreciate it.
Thank you. We're blessed.
Just add to what Jordan said. I remember I hadn't been on the board long when we had the Hosenback Fire, and I think it was July 4.
Yes, sir.
And it was an opening experience for me. I probably had a little doubt. I said, we're going to be ready, but I'm always amazed, I don't worry about it anymore. Don't concern myself with it because I know you and your team can take care of this, and it's very much appreciated.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Joe, I do have a question when I saw this on the agenda, and I've got to ask for the parents out there. Since we're speaking about athletics, what's going on with the weight room? You know, that was supposed to be in part this space?
Yes, ma'am. That is in BASSA II, and it's open. It'll be, it's ready for kids when they start school on Thursday.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Our two action items tonight, the first is facility use policy revision. We're asking the superintendent to recommend revision of policy KG, use of school facilities, and supporting documentation. This policy and its supporting documentation has been revised after conversation with our Building Committee last month. Facility use policies of surrounding districts were examined to help develop our proposed changes. School system staff and legal counsel participated in the review and edit process. The rationale behind this is we really haven't done anything with this policy in more than a dozen years, and there are a number of items that are out of date or no longer apply. There's also some redundancy in there that we wanted to clean up, and so we wanted to streamline these items and have them more properly aligned with our current facility use needs. And so the attachments are there, and as you can tell, we bled over these pretty good, but again, we feel like it'll be a better use to us the way it's currently arranged, and so I believe that's got to sit on the table for a 30-day period. But again, happy to answer any questions. There might be.
I did have a question. When I saw how much was deleted out of it, my concern is that what this was done in a building and grounds committee, where every district is not represented there, and that's my concern, that every district needs to be represented when we're changing a policy, especially as much blue as I see outlined. I did read over it in detail. Didn't see anything that glaringly stood out to me really as problematic, but when I see this much of a change in a policy, I think this needs to come back to the full board because every district is represented that way. If it's minor changes, I don't have a problem, but if it's that much change, I think every district needs to be represented and have a say so there.
Well, and the Building Committee meeting and its input into this, and those that were present may speak to it, but it was very general in nature. It just gives us an opportunity to kind of communicate some things we're seeing in the policy and the documentation and get their feedback. That's really it. And then we go back as a staff and do the, sort of the nuts and bolts of it.
Right. My concern, though, over 20 something years, is many, many times, things that happen in that building and grounds committee do not get brought back to the full board unless we got to act on it, and to just get put on an agenda or for us to look at on a Friday doesn't really give us a lot of time to ask questions because we've now been told, don't call the department heads, call the superintendent directly. So we're trying to get everything done from Friday till Monday, doesn't really give us a lot of time and discuss as a full board all the information. And so why this, why that? Like I said, I feel like every district needs to make sure that they're represented when this much of a change is going to be done. That's just my concern, if it's going to be done in a committee.
I will note that two at-large positions were on that committee, just to make it.
I know, but still.
Dr. Coleman, Doug, Scott, make a point.
If I may just make a point of clarification, board members, what we're voting on tonight is to place this policy on the table for public comment and review, so we'll have a month to do exactly what you're talking about, Ms. Kelly, and the board will then decide in a month if they want to table a vote or amend the policy in some other way, other than is listed here tonight.
I want to make a comment about that, too, if I may, because I'm on that building and grounds committee and have been for years. When this was brought to us and we read the policy, we looked at it, and we said there is a lot of redundancy here, all we've really done is give a general idea to Joe and his folks about what needed to be in this, and as you can see, the majority of this was deleted. A lot of it was redundant, and that's why I bring it to the board tonight. Now, I'll have a committee to hold, you know, it's fine with me for everything we do, but we won't get everybody there, and there's, you know, a lot of issues there, but as a board member and as someone who has served on building and grounds for years, I am actually grateful to Joe and his team for the outstanding job that he does in looking at these policies and really working through all the details and what needs to be done and what we need to do and how we can make this as transparent and convenient for the taxpayers who are using his facilities.
Right, and that's, you know, streamlined, but when you see, like I said, I look back, all this blue, we never see that much, so I don't know why. The building and grounds, the building and grounds committee before had it so redundant. I don't know. I mean, that's why.
And we'll talk about that in the future, but for now, does anybody have any other questions before we add this one to the consent agenda? Alrighty. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Our final action item is Primero background check contract changes. We're asking the superintendent to recommend revision of the Barrow County Schools' contract with Primero staffing in two areas. One, requiring additional background checks of employees after five years of service, and two- And two, to follow cleaning schedules as established or altered periodically for use in all buildings. And so the idea behind this is that, you know, we require background checks every five years for Barrow County Schools employees, and we just want to get the Primero staffing employees in alignment with that, that same process. And the second piece to it is years ago, we had help from a consultant putting a cleaning plan together. We're no longer, you know, doing business with that, with that vendor, and so it's not really necessary to have that language in the contract either. And so the amendment addresses those two items. And that's kind of the long and short of that. If there are any questions?
Consent?
Yes.
All righty, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All righty, next we'll welcome up Dr. Moten with Teaching and Learning.
Good evening. There are two items under Teaching and Learning. There is actually one item of information and one action item. For the item of information, we spoke last month about the strategic plan and one of those areas was family engagement. And so I've invited Ms. Wright, Mr. Manzo, and Dr. James to give us some additional information about what is happening with family engagement across the district, and I think you'll be pleased with some of the future plans that we have.
Where's...
Can I have a picture?
Oh.
Next slide.
Next slide, please. Thank you. Well, one...
Actually, go back to the first one.
There we go. Oh, can you go back to the...
Go ahead.
You want to go back to the, sorry, go back to the first one. So some questions were raised, I guess, for the percentages, and so we wanted to highlight some of the items and action steps and give specific examples on how we were addressing those. Like I think Ms. Bradford had mentioned before, that 25% really isn't a great way to measure our participation and the involvement that we have with our families. And so I just wanted to bring again back in front of you, we did this kind of presentation in November during Family Engagement Month, but a lot has happened since then, so I just wanted to bring that back in front of you and also share with you the plans that we have for this coming school year as well.
Good evening. So one of the first things that, or one of the first action steps would be to create a virtual Parent Resource Center or Family Resource Center. The communications team has done a great job of adding different resources for families as they have been requested. We do have the District Virtual Resource Center, and we also, each school has their own individual and specialized one. Some resources are shared across all websites and other are more school-specific. This is just a little reminder or a little refresher of what we are doing here in Barrow County Schools to make sure that we are able to connect with all our community regardless of the language they may speak. Two things, two services that we are providing to the Barrow County Schools community would be our approved interpreters here at Barrow County Schools. We recruit them, we train them. I'll talk a little bit more about that process, but we also are able to provide Language Line. And Language Line is more of a on, over-the-phone interpreting service, and it's a little bit more broad, which enables us to provide languages that we aren't necessarily able to provide with in-person interpreters. So when it comes to the actual process of recruiting, training, all of our interpreters, as I mentioned last time, we do advertise, social media, website recommendations. We accept recommendations from our staff and other people in general. We work somewhat closely with UGA. They, we have a lot of our interpreters coming out of their, one of their three interpreting courses. Languages we currently have right now are English Spanish, English Mandarin, English Ukrainian, and English Russian. Once we receive that recommendation or the candidate demonstrates that they have interest to become one of our approved interpreters, we go through a vetting process. As of right now, we do the English Spanish process here in locally in Barrow County Schools. I personally do that. We have a virtual test in which the candidates are assessed on their language skills, how effectively they are able to communicate in English Spanish based on actual vocabulary that we used here in Barrow County Schools. Then we also contracted, we've been contracting with Ulta Services to provide a language proficiency test, if you want to call it that, for other languages that I personally do not speak. Like I said, we do have interpreters who have a professional interpreter certification from UGA. Once the vetting process is over, we go on to ongoing improvement. We do provide two trainings a year, and I am available for on-the-go training with interpreters. We have a lot of new folks who don't have that much experience with interpreting, and I make sure to work with them either one-on-one or as a group to provide all that vocabulary that they need and make sure that they are able to provide that quality service that we are looking for.
And so one of the questions that you had for was how much of an increase have we had with parent engagement? And that was something that we addressed in November of we did not, we did not require schools to have a electronic versus a paper sign-in sheet, and that with some of the events, when you are talking about over 500 families, it was just impossible to get that many signatures. And so we don't have a holistic data set for that. But as you can see with some of the events, we have events from all the schools. They are shoulder-to-shoulder kind of events. There's no parking and people are parking everywhere. The administrators have been very positive in their feedback with how their events have, you know, been, participation has been really high. There's only requirements of two events per semester. However, all of our schools do more than four events for the whole year. We actually have some of it, some schools that do 20, 30 events just at various times and throughout the year, just to be able to hit everybody, whether you work or you have night shift or just the various events that are happening in the school. With this reward everyone that contributes to student success action step, not only are our parents coming in and learning and celebrating with their kids and seeing that piece when they're helping the success of their students, but we also are meeting that action step through the Barrow Best Program, which has actually been ongoing since 2018. It is a, each year, people are nominated and selected in five different categories within Barrow County. The contributing professionals, nutrition, service, support, and transportation. And those people within our district are highlighted and recognized through our program under Dr. Rowland, actually. So I wanted to make sure that we recognize that that has been an ongoing program to meet this action step. And then we have some plans upcoming for this school year.
So good evening, guys. So we are bolder together, and we are extremely excited to provide family engagement workshops each month. Each month, we will focus on various topics, and our workshop, workshop topics stem from our Barrow County Comprehensive Needs Assessment Survey results, which are results and feedback that come directly from our families. Any of our upcoming initiatives and our strategic plan. We have various presenters ranging from district office leaders, some of our school level leaders, our administrators and our instructional coaches, leaders within our community, leaders that are knowledgeable within their respective professions, and also leaders from the Department of Education that will be joining us for our monthly meetings and workshops. Each one of our workshops will be held here at the board office. We plan to have two locations, one in the boardroom as well as one in the computer lab and do rotating sessions. In our times, we are hoping to be able to meet our needs of our families, so we have some evening sessions scheduled as well as some day sessions scheduled. But we'll get additional information and advertising soon, so look out for our bolder together news. And as you see, these are our different tentative topics for each month. And again, it's based on our comprehensive needs assessments, and this is feedback that came directly from our families.
That is fantastic. I'm excited about those.
I have a couple of questions. Since I think I was the one who requested most of the information you guys had to put together. First of all, thank you for doing that. But I'm still concerned about our not being able to track actually how many of our families are benefiting from these services. You know, we need to be able to say this many families actually participated and then show results. Obviously, we're having great results from this, but I hope we can come up with a way to actually track how many families were actually helping.
So our schools actually do track that. It just happens to be some are used, using paper sign-ins, and then sometimes they switch to QR code sign-ins, so it can vary at different events to different schools. I can certainly ask for that data to come to the central office so that I can compile that and give you kind of a general. But I know that they have, you know, shared that even though they only had three pages of sign-in sheets, there was, you know, 500 people in the building at least because it was shoulder-to-shoulder and nobody could park anywhere. So they know that it was not a full reflection on those sheets, so...
Right. I'm just saying for future grants and things of that type, it would be great if we could come up with some firm numbers on this.
Yes.
And maybe they just need to compile, you know, all the data.
Yes.
That they have the sign-in sheets and everything, QR codes. I expect most people using sign-up sheets that are coming for this.
Right.
And the other question I have goes back to the language services that we have for interpreting. How many, do we know how many languages are spoken in Barrow County's households now? I've gotten several different estimates of this.
I will say that off the top of my head, I cannot name the exact amount. I can pull a report out of Elevation, which is a platform that we use for all our EAL students. That gives us the exact amount of students, based on the information of Whole Language Service, that they have indicated what languages they speak at home.
Okay.
I can mention some that I know have been requested very popular across the district. One of them that's really complicated to find is Gichet, which is a language that is spoken in, it's a native language to Guatemala. We have an influx of fam, we have had an influx of families from Guatemala over the past couple of years, and we are still struggling to be able to meet that need. Families are reliant on other people who come from Guatemala who are able to speak their native language and, or their native dialect and Spanish, and then we are able to provide that service. Other languages that we have that have been expressed are Mong, French, or Haitian Creole. There's one more. Russia, yeah, we have Russian, Ukrainian, Spanish, French, and there's potentially Romanian as well, but I can get that information for you.
It would be helpful if we knew that.
Yes, ma'am.
Because we need to get out of that community too.
Okay. I'll make sure to provide that information to you.
Thanks.
All righty, thank you, Mr. Manzo, Ms. Wright, and Dr. James. Great presentation.
For the action item for Teaching and Learning, HMH Into Reading and Into Math Georgia. HMH Into Reading with WAGL and Into Math Georgia with WAGL are comprehensive core literacy and math curriculum materials that provide students in all schools within the district with consistent, comprehensive, standards-based, Tier One instruction. There is a recommendation from the superintendent to authorize the purchase of $300,000 of growth and replacement materials to be spent over a three-year period for HMH Into Reading with WAGL and Into Math Georgia with WAGL for K5. The financial impact is, as stated, $300,000. These funds will be spent over a three-year period, '24, '25, '25, '26, and '26, '27. A combination of funding sources which include general funds, consolidated funds, and L4GA funds will be used.
Any questions? Consent? All right, thank you so much.
Teaching and Learning.
All righty, next I'd like to welcome up not only to the podium, but officially to Barrow County, Dr. Kurtz, who has taken Ms. Beggs' position as our Associate Superintendent over HR.
Well, thank you for having me. I am honored to be here and be a part of this, and I thank all you board members for the work you do. I know that is sometimes some thankless work. I do not have any information items from the Human Resources Division at this, at this meeting, but I do have one action item. We'd like to recommend the superintendent has to have a policy revision placed on the consent agenda for policy GARH, Employee Leaves and Absences. It'd be placed on the consent agenda for, to go on the table for public input. The specific revision is a small one, and it is to change the amount, the maximum allowable amount of paid parental leave from 120 hours to 240 hours to be in line with the recently passed House Bill 1010 in the most recent legislative session.
Any questions?
Yeah.
All righty, thank you so much, sir. All righty, and lastly, we'd like to welcome up Dr. Thompson with Strategic Information Services.
All right, good evening. I have two items of information and no action items tonight. At our previous meeting, we went through the communications report, because this is a report that Ms. Valas compiles monthly that gives updates on various communication initiatives within the district. And we went through this kind of in detail. We're not going to do that every month, but we do want to each month highlight different areas of our communication efforts that really struck home with parents. And I have a couple I want to share with you, it's not actually three, as it comes to mind. Michelle, if you will turn to the very first, just keep going, I'll say kind of when to stop, this should be on the first popular posts, just below the social media numbers updates. All right, there we go. So our most popular and most engaged post for the month of June, and remember, we do this on a staggered basis, so we're still compiling July because we're still in July, so we'll have that at the August work session. In our most popular post for the month was the Winder Legacy Park, which obviously has been a tremendous success for the entire community. If you've had a chance to drive by, you can see there are families and kids there at all hours of the day. We did a lot of work on our social media engaging with our families about pointing out the district's role in that, the district's initiative in that. Obviously, that's a collaboration with the Barrow Community Foundation, but the system played a key result role in that. So we spent a lot of time engaging with our families and stakeholders on making them aware of that park and how the district has played a role in that, and that was a smashing success. And you can see we had quite a bit of engagement with our families on there, and we are very appreciative of that. Second thing I wanted to highlight is if you go to the videos page, some videos shared in June, one of the things that we try to do is we use our communication not just to make parents aware of things, but to help give them a deeper understanding of things. And we can use different mediums to do that effectively with them in similar ways that our Teaching and Learning Department just discussed how they do outreach with family engagement. One of the things that's going to be a major initiative in the district over the next few years, I know the board is aware because we've discussed this at length, the amount of growth the system is going to experience over the next five years. Unfortunately, we would all love to just build schools at pace with that, but that's not the way capital funding works, and that's not the way realistically we can build schools fast enough, which means districts statewide, nationwide, have to pace that growth by using external units that they purchase to augment their population when they run out of space in the building. We, Ms. Kelly, will be appreciative, we no longer call these learning cottages. We use, even though they are a little more expensive, we have been utilizing pods for the last few years. We currently have a pod out at BASSA, and that is going to become the Horizon Program in the upcoming year. The board also approved in the spring the purchase of three pods, two, one of which will go at each of our traditional high schools for overflow growth, and one of which will go to County Line to serve as part of the potential ELC, Early Learning Center for pre-K students. Well, parents are like anyone else, when they hear their kid may have to be in an external unit, that can be a little daunting. And we wanted to kind of help them understand that these are not the trailers they probably went through when they were in school. So we had on the last day of school, and if you notice, some of the kids look a little bit tired, it was the last day of school, but we sent Jackson Hensley out to BASSA. But we sent Jackson Hensley out to Bassa, and he did this short video. So Rochelle, if you'll click in the middle, and we'll see what the pods look like. That was a very short video, and I'm not sure if you've watched that before. But that is what the pods actually look like. And I think what you can tell by going through there, obviously, we would prefer all of our students be in the physical plant of the building. Y'all heard that too, right? Okay, good. So, you know, what we want to do, though, is to give parents a bit of an insight into the fact that these are much nicer than with the trailers they were used to growing up. Now, obviously, we want everybody in the building. But we think this is a much better way, even though it does cost the district a bit more, to keep kids safe, to keep kids comfortable, to keep teachers comfortable. It's a much better environment. And so as we will be inevitably using more and more of these as part of our approach to growth, we wanted to have videos like this and others that will help parents feel a little more comfortable about the environment some other students may be in for summer or all of their classes. So that was just a video I wanted to share. We will do that sometimes and share some of the videos that we show to our families in the meeting. The third thing on the communication front was, this will actually show up on your July communication report, but sometimes you got to strike while the iron is hot. Some of you may have seen this on Facebook. We had a tremendous community outgrowth this past week for our 2024 Book Bag Drive. That was spearheaded by Ms. Ellen Petrie. But that is an event that was hosted by Bethlehem Church 316 Campus. More than 33 sponsors, lots of volunteers. And as a result of that, over 2,400 book bags filled with school supplies were distributed to between 800 to 1,000 Barrow County families. And that's a really powerful thing the community does, that the school system is able to coordinate and partner with our churches, with organizations. It is a tremendous thing that provides a lot of benefit to our families. And so you'll see the videos from all that. And if you actually want to go on Facebook, you can see the photos now. But we wanted to take a moment to celebrate that because it's a really cool thing. And we are at the beginning of the school year. And so that was something I wanted to highlight. The second piece of information I have to you, we will be using this report periodically, probably most months, to share some student outcome data with you. We want to focus on how we're impacting students. We know through communication, we tell the story. But part of why we're strategic information systems is we also want to look at the outcomes. We want to look at the measurable outcomes as well because both are critical and important. So we will be spending some time in these reports, going through data with you guys, things we're seeing with our families as the particular months will be relevant. One of the things we can share right now is our results from our advanced placement testing for the school year 2024. So those of you know, there are 38 approved AP courses nationwide. Students take it's a national curriculum, extremely rigorous. And those have to be taught by teachers who are prepared to teach those types of courses. And we encourage many of our students to do these because it is a higher level that prepares them for college-level work. In addition, the College Board offers AP testing. Why AP testing is critical is if students choose to take an AP test, and they're not required to, to earn course credit. If they take an AP course and they earn a three or higher out of five at almost every degree granting institution, that will earn them a college credit for that course. So we did want to briefly share our results because we are pretty proud of them. The first thing you can see is our total AP exams taken. Students may take more than one exam. So this will look at a second individual student. You'll see that number had been declining since about 2015. You may ask, why was it declining? That's around the time Georgia rolled out dual enrollment, where students could take college credit through dual enrollment, through college portions. They've been able to do that for a while. The state invested a lot of resources and funding in doing that. What we found was at the beginning, that was replacement level, where kids did, took dual enrollment instead of taking AP courses. But what you've seen is since 2021, there has been a rapid increase in students taking AP courses and tests. And there has not been a decline in dual enrollment, which means students are taking more of both, which is important because that means they are better prepared for post-secondary. They're earning more credits. We're having, we're getting the best of both worlds, and we're excited about that. So you can see we had 970 total AP exams taken in the school year 2024. The next slide shows you the total number of individual students who took AP tests. That was 584 across our three high schools took AP exams in 2024. That is also an increase. We were as low as 376 just three years ago. You may ask how many, what percentage of students take those tests? It is the majority of them, around three-quarters, take that. Not every student chooses to, and that's something we're not going to make a student do. But students, the majority of them do take those AP exams. We want them not just to take AP courses and exams, but do well on them. So we look at the percentages of students that score three or higher. Those are the ones that will be potentially earning college credit with the institution of their choice. And you can see that number has been the last two years right at 60 to 61%, which is as high as it's been since 2014, when AP was the predominant mode of taking college credit courses. So we're proud that we're not only having more students take AP courses, they're doing well in them. They're earning college credit, the majority of them who take the AP exam. And that's something that we're excited about. Last two slides are just, if you have the question of which tests are being taken the most frequently, you can see in terms of the number of AP exams by subject. Most popular are English Language and Composition, Human Geography, U.S. History, and World History. And so that's the most popular of these. But you can see we have them all across the spectrum. And then the very last thing, you can see the three or higher rate by subject. I will caution you, the general consideration is not all of these tests are created equal. And some of them are more difficult and demanding. So it's not quite as simple as just looking at a particular subject area and saying, well, why is that one higher? Some of these are actually much more challenging to pass at the college level. So that's some information for you. We're excited about that. That means more of our students are prepared for post-secondary, which is part of our strategic plan. Just wanted to share that with you tonight, and I'll field any questions that you have. Yes?
It's going back to the pods, which are really attractive, I think. But just as a safety issue for the kids, for example, when there's bad inclement weather that comes, are they anchored in some way? Are they at risk for, you know, moving? Or, you know, obviously, they're not going to be as safe as a building that has foundation. Are you able to get these kids somehow out of that building?
I'm going to defer to my colleague, Mr. Joe Perno.
They are anchored. And in the case of the pod innovation campus, I mean, they're just steps away from Bassa too. So that would be their route in an emergency.
Is there any way to kind of connect, like make some, you could almost make them look like they were attached if you had some kind of a little ramp or like, almost like a little walkway? Just a thought.
There's different ranges that you can have with them, based on, you know, the landscape and the contour and things like that. There is flexibility with those.
Just curious about the safety.
I do have one question. When you brought up safety, what about, which is my big issue that I've had with the learning cottages? Was the safety on that, if God forbid, we were to ever have an active shooter, will we still move them into the main building?
I think that's a question that generally speaking, in an active shooter scenario, you want them to be hunkered down in a classroom.
Right there, even if they're right there.
Over here, like you don't want them traversing the campus in that situation. All of those rooms can be locked. All of those rooms can be secured. You know, honestly, if you walk through.
Are they safer than the trailers?
Oh, yeah. And that's what I kind of want to point out is no one believes these are the optimal place for students to be learning. But we're comparing them to what we schools have done for decades on when experiencing growth, which would have been traditional trailers. These are miles safer and more secure than those.
That's my concern, that was my big concern, you know, thinking about.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
I just have a copy. I am really impressed by the 69% calculus AP testing.
I didn't take it when I was in high school, so kudos to them.
Thanks for sharing.
Alright, thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you and each of the department heads for giving us an update. It's been a long summer, so it was nice to kind of get back up and at it. At this time, we're going to go into executive session to discuss or deliberate upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action, or dismissal, or periodic evaluation or rating of a public officer or employee, or to interview applicants for the position of superintendent.
Yes.
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 Alrighty, thank you, guys. We'll be back in a few minutes.
Sims Academy is a career-prepped school available to all high school students in Barrow County. Daily, Sims is filled with students taking dual enrollment courses, industry-specific CTAE classes, and Sims offered high school classes like construction. Pending the student's schedule, they may spend all day at Sims or utilize the BCSS organized shuttles to or from their home schools.
Sims is also home to many of Barrow County's school system's unique programs, such as the Newcomer Academy, YES Program, and STEP Program.
Sims was the first school on the Innovation Campus before being joined by Linear Technical College, Barrow Arts and Science Academy, and Austin Road Elementary School. It began with a mission that continues to evolve to ensure the success of BCSS students and our local community.
The YES Program at Sims is a class for students with disabilities that are in their senior year of high school. The YES Program is partnered with the Goodwill Northeast Georgia, Georgia Vocational Rehabilitation Agency, and High School High Tech, with the goal of helping seniors be better prepared for the independent employment after high school.
Goodwill staff works with participants of the Youth Job Training Program to set career goals and equip students with the necessary skills to enter the workforce. YES participants can earn high school credit for job readiness training classes and paid work experience. The YES Program has three phases. Phase one, one transition class at Sims Academy during the fall semester of senior year. Phase two, a paid internship in the spring of senior year if the student has proven to be motivated and reliable. Phase three, full-time job placement after graduation.
The Student Transition Enrichment Program, also known as STEP, is a full-time, year-long, school-to-work transition program for students with significant cognitive disabilities who have the goal of supported employment after high school. The STEP Program provides supportive work experiences in a variety of community business settings, as well as within common ground, the cafeteria, and various CTAE classrooms. It also gives students the opportunity to practice self-determination, self-advocacy, and independent living skills. This program has an application process, and students must be accepted for the IEP team to consider this service.
Sims Academy students can build a strong foundation for their culinary careers through our dual enrollment partnership with Linear Technical College. Highly qualified instructors from Linear Technical College teach students in the Career and Technical Education Programs available to students through Sims Academy.
The Culinary Arts Program prepares students for employment within many facets of the food service industry. Students will obtain technical skills training focusing on food preparation, sanitation, nutrition, marketing, catering, management fundamentals, and work ethics.
The Prep Cook Technical Certificate of Credit provides skills for entry into the food services preparation area as a prep cook. Topics include food services history, safety and sanitation, purchasing and food control, nutrition and menu development and design, along with the principles of cooking. Students who complete this certificate are positioned to earn several additional certificates that lead to a diploma or degree in culinary arts.
Sims offers students a hands-on opportunity to learn construction, carpentry, and electrical fundamentals. The construction pathway consists of four courses, ranging from fundamentals and safety to carpentry and electrical skills. These courses are designed to help prepare students for careers in the construction industry. And many graduates find work in the construction industry after completing this pathway. The motto that students have in the class is that anything worth doing is worth doing right the first time.
The Barrow County Newcomer Academy was established in 2017 with the purposes of supporting high school students as they transition to life in the United States. Since its inception, the Newcomer Academy has served speakers of many different languages from all around the world. Instructors work with students to develop their English and product support in their academic classes. Additionally, the Newcomer Academy serves to support students with many unique challenges of adapting to life in new culture surrounded by a new language.
Sims Academy in Barrow County offers high school students a dynamic career prep experience with dual enrollment, CTAE classes, and unique courses. Sims is a direct path to a brighter future.
I've seen extremely competitive senior classes, but I've never been able to introduce three star students. Let's get started. I've got a lot to say. Appalachia's first star student is Ashton Graham. I'll let you hold this when I talk about you. He's going to take you in. Ashton is a four-year varsity soccer player and team captain. He is president of HOSA. He is vice president of the Science National Honor Society. He's also a member of NHS, Math Honor Society, Beta, and the Student-Athlete Ambassadors. He's also participated in the past in Youth Leadership Barrow and the Chick-fil-A Leadership Academy. Since third grade, he's volunteered at Special Olympics, and I'm sure he will again this year. He coaches at the Piedmont Soccer Academy, and he's just a really super kind young man. He plans to major in biology and become a doctor. And he's deciding where he'll start that journey soon. I think scholarships are in his future. It's also really important to note that after all of that, doing all that he does, Ashton is also the 2024 valedator of his class. Congratulations, and it's been quite an honor to get to know you. I'm going to let you introduce your star teacher.
My star teacher that I chose, I had all the way back in third grade. He was the first guy to actually challenge me in my intellect and gave me opportunity to do work for fourth, fifth grade, middle school, all the way back in third grade. And, but it's not only that, why I chose him, the main reason I chose him was the effect he had on me and then all the other people around him outside of like a school, just academic setting. He, I had this one friend, I'm not going to say his name, but he, he was extremely smart as well. It's just, he had some other things that held him back. And Mr. McCoy was the first person I saw that gave him the opportunity to showcase his knowledge in another way. And he was one of the smartest kids at the school. So for that reason, I chose Mr. Carl McCoy as my star teacher.
Thank you, wow. I don't want to say, but I'll say. Thank you to the Chamber of Commerce. It does mean a lot to be recognized. And thank you, Ashton. That was very kind of you to say. I thought I'd tell a story about Ashton from the first day of school in third grade back when, that kind of says it all about him. Everything that his principal said comes out in the story. Forgive me if I get the dates wrong. It's been a decade. During our morning announcements, we would recognize, you know, okay, this, you guys, you're graduating in what year? And Dave, we're all saying 2024. So I cracked the joke, oh, you're making me feel old. Then I put a problem on the board and said, well, I graduated in 1988. And how, how many years would pass in between your graduation date and my graduation date? And the kids all puzzled. And this guy here, you have to picture an elementary school classroom, 15 minutes into the first day of school, it's all about chill out. Take your supplies out, you know, it's a big mess. And this guy, he's, he's got to solve the problem. So he tears into his pencil pack. Pencils fall all over the floor. He runs the sharpener, he sharpens it, he solves the problems. Raising his hand, and it looks like if I don't call on him, he's going to burst. Okay, so I called him, and he came up with the right answer, of course. He said 36 years. And one of the other students said, so does that mean you're 36? Or does that mean that you'll be 36 when we graduate? Thank you for that. No, for either one. And I said, well, maybe we can figure that out. And so this guy, he starts figuring it out. And I said, well, some of the other kids have obviously figured it out too. And I said, well, Ashton, pick a couple of kids, be in a group with you, see if you can figure out how old I really am. So he picked two of his friends. And then I went on to show the other kids how to do the first problem. And when we were done, I called on Ashton, I said, Ashton, how old are you? And he said, can I let him say it? And it didn't dawn on me then, but the kid that he picked was. And it didn't dawn on me then, but the kid that he picked was one of his friends, and this kid struggled a bit, as I've learned as the months went by. And he let this kid say it, and he let this kid explain. Furthermore, while that kid explained it, he went and picked up his pencil off the floor. So it's, it was an honor to teach you, and you left me with lots of stories like that, but that's the one that really stands out. And good luck, and you're going to make a fine gastroenterologist.
Being a star teacher in Appalachia years ago was the greatest honor of my career, and so it was really exciting for me to see an elementary school teacher chosen, and Ashton was really clear about, he, he started me off right and changed my education, so I'm really excited for the two of them. Our second star student is Nathaniel Maxson. I'm glad he's here and on time. When we were honoring a lot of academic honors, our top 10, our star students, our Val, our Sal, we waited on him, he made a grand entrance, and that's who he is, and we, we love seeing him in our hallways and doing all that he does, he's an asset to Appalachia. Nathaniel was a member of the golf team for one year. He has played football for four years, as a linebacker. All the, all the things. He plans to receive a bachelor's in business administration from the University of North Georgia, and I think he'll do fine with that, as he currently has a 3.83 GPA. Nathaniel, please introduce your star teacher. And he's struggling with his voice, so we're going to-
I'm going to whisper for y'all today. So, I picked this student because she just changed my outlook at school. I've always been somebody who like, really likes numbers, and they always cling to me. But whenever I walked in her classroom, from day one, she's been loving the gym. She pushes me every day, and that's the reason I ended up taking college classes again. I ended up taking much of the work, because of her, and I just appreciate that as a person. Thank you.
I'm going to summarize, he said he always loved numbers until he was in Ms. Atkinson's literature class. She taught him to love literature, and then he went on to take English 1101, and is the man he is today, because of you.
Good morning. It's unusual that he can't speak. Finally caught up with him. Max, is his nickname, is, was in the 10th grade. He was a great writer, he would ask for feedback, a lot of kids get really angry when you give them constructive feedback. He'd rewrite, he was great at writing, and we had mini-socratic seminars and debates, and he would handle himself well, always. Couple times I might have to say, hold on for just a second, but I will say that you were always, and you still are, the voice for the underdog. I started my day out with you, and we won't use names.
Alrighty, guys, welcome back. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the personnel report as presented.
Second.
Way down here, just pick one.
Okay, Ms. Stevens made the motion, Ms. Kelly made the second, all in favor. Alrighty, unanimous, motion passes. If there is nothing else to discuss amongst the board, we are adjourned. Have a good night.